All righty. Good morning, everyone. This is a special meeting, May 17, 2023. We'll get into the reasons for the meeting in a moment, but Amanda, it's nine o'clock. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Schroder?
Here.
All righty. We have a quorum. First up is approval of the agenda and accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. The first item of business we actually have is to -- oh, I guess we should vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. First order of business, actually go into executive session and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby move that the Albert County Board of County Commissioners go into an executive session with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions or issues pursuant to Section 24-6-402, Part N, four, Part N, B of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Specifically, I move that the Board of County Commissioners go into executive session to discuss a potential engagement of outside counsel in participation of litigation involving Senate Bill 23-303.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to exit this room and move to a conference room to hold our executive session with the county attorney. So I guess we will return at that point. It's 9:02, I guess. All righty, the time is now 9:27. We're coming back into session. Do we need to do roll call again, or -- no, okay. So the time is now 9:27. The Board of County Commissioners is now out of executive session. The participants in the executive session were myself, Commissioner Thayer, Commissioner Schroder, and the county attorney Greer. The board took no formal action in contravention of Section 24-6-402, four of the Colorado Revised Statutes, and no adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, or regulation took place. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper actions occurred during the executive session in violation of the Colorado Open Meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record at this time. Seeing none, our next agenda item was moving into action, and that was possible action regarding litigation involving adopted 2023 legislation. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners engage outside counsel and participate in litigation involving Senate Bill 23-303.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay. Full discussion until after the vote? Okay. All righty, do you have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. So we do have an engagement letter with Advance Colorado. They're engaging with multiple counties throughout the state to request a declaratory judgment, a review of the Senate Bill 303, which pulled together many, many different things, though it was purported to directly address property tax relief. It also increases labor reserves, adds money to the state education fund, does many things that, on the face of it, look like it violates the constitutional requirement that a bill cover only a single subject. So their ask is that the courts find it, find one way or the other whether that was true or not. Again, I think we're all for property tax relief. We're working towards it in our own ways as an individual taxing entity, but I think this is one where the ends doesn't justify the means, and the ends are actually not exactly what they were publicly stated to be. So that's kind of where I'm at. Anybody else?
Yeah, one of the things that I'm very hopeful is that having these outside Yeah. One of the things that I'm very hopeful is that having these outside attorneys look at this, we'll end up with a better understanding of how all of this works together. As I've been trying to understand it, there's some things that appear to be internally at conflict with each other, and we need to have a good understanding of what this is. And this is our way to get there.
I agree with everything that's been said, and the different issues within the bill. There's other things that are troubling as well, particularly for me, the taper cap raise is a hard one to swallow, especially when I've seen over the last few years how the fees have been raised in motor vehicle, again, trying to circumvent the taper, depending on how you define it, fee or tax. And so we've seen a continued desire to consolidate power at the state level, both over at the clerk's office and now here, and I think it's a worthy endeavor to push back.
Thank you. So I guess our next steps, I'll sign the engagement letter for the county. We're also free to join as individual commissioners, and then I think we need to craft a press release or message of some sort just to ensure our citizens know that we aren't taking a stand to fight against tax relief, that this is largely procedural, but we also are trying to keep our legislature and our governor honest in their dealings with the public. Thanks. Any other comments? Or questions, or anything? If not, that is the sole item we had to take action on today. There's no other items on the agenda, so I'd accept a move to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. It's nine thirty-two, and we are adjourned. Thank you.